The utility really, really loves them. Congratulations to them. I wanted to thank Commissioner Borowski as well as Susan Fricki for inviting me to participate with the Fairmount Neighbors Meeting for last month, I guess, at this point. So, Commissioner, for setting that up. And then, kind of on a sad note, I don't know if Brown may remember Therese Hampton, who came to a Commissioner's meeting with Arnie Olson to present some data. Very, very instrumental person in the industry. She passed away last week from a bicycling accident. She's the former Executive Director of the Public Generating Pool, of which E-Web's been a part of for a long time. Just retired about six months ago and very close to a number of E-Web staff. And so, definitely will be missed as both a colleague and a friend to a number of people at E-Web. So, it was a tough week last week for a number of people in the industry and the Pacific Northwest. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you. Matt? Sonia?
Yeah, I was just going to mention the neighborhood meeting that Frank and Susan attended. It went over really well. The presentation was received well, I think, by the neighbors. We talked about a couple of things. We talked about our water resiliency and some of the things that we've been doing up the McKenzie. And then, we also talked about electrification. And Frank gave kind of his 20-minute speech on how we get our power and where we get it from. It was enlightening, and I think something that we'll be seeing more of throughout the rest of the community in the upcoming weeks and months.
Manny?
I attended the listening sessions that we had here on the Lieber Dam and just really want to thank staff for all of their hard work in putting together those presentations and the film that Adam put together. It was really, really fantastic.
Thank you. And I see we've got an agenda item about the liaison in the city, so we'll get into that a little later. One thing I do want to ask is that, and John Borowski brought this up at the listening session earlier, and I think it's a good point, that there's a group of people that we're not hearing from, and that's the 86,000 rink beers that we have here that are going to be affected by what we do up the river. We haven't seen or heard from any of them. And so, I'm thinking, personally, I'd like to ask if I could get E-Web to help me take out a half-page ad in the Gard and summarize the four options, what they cost, what it means and rates, and say, "If you have input, contact me." And I know that's leaving with my chin, I'm asking for, but to do it right, because we haven't heard from 86,000 people that are going to be affected by this for 20 years. And we're going to strap somebody with a pretty big bill, because normally when we spend $200 million bucks, we generate power, we pay it back. This is just a big hole in the wall. And I would like to see if that passes the test of me spending some money, you know, half-page ad saying, you know, "Contact me," or "Contact the entire board. Here's words one and eight, here's two and seven, here's four and five, and these are the options. This is what it's going to cost. If you want to give us input about what you want, what's important to you, tell us or get informed." Is that something that's a reasonable request?
So, Commissioner, I think it's definitely reasonable to reach out to the broader base of constituency. We did have a general survey that went out. I don't know how we have parsed out. We do know that by zip code, for example, so we can see how many are upriver river and how many are in town. I don't believe that this should be on the individual commissioners to respond to. I'll get with our communications team and what we can specifically do to learn about an in-town response versus an upriver response. And I think that's how I would like to approach it. I don't think that you necessarily need to receive a number of phone calls. I think there's some ways that we can do it qualitatively and quantitatively using some of our more traditional approaches to it. But it might require a little bit of additional promotion, so that's why it's received.
You know, that's just my idea that I would like to do. If others don't want to do it, then chime in right now. But I want to make sure that we reach out. We have a lot of people this is going to affect for a really long period of time, and this, you know, this isn't an optional commodity. This is something that, you know, people can, they're only going to buy two of them, they still have to have electricity. And it's going to affect them significantly for a long, long period of time. And I want to make sure that we've done everything, or at least I've done everything I can to outreach to these people. Sonia?
I'm willing to send out, like, if we had a post or something on the social media, I could send out something from, like, the Nextdoor Neighborhood groups. You can do something like that to help spread it in a different way. I haven't done that yet. If there's, you know, a blip that you'd like us to share, we could Facebook and Nextdoor and things of that nature.
Okay. I'll get back to Commissioners on that.
Anything else for the good of the river? Nothing. Then, the next agenda item is going to be public input. Do we have anybody signed up for public input? Two people, good. Okay. Familiar names? Okay, public input. I'm going to take executive privilege here, in the sense I've done this, and you're both two familiar faces with us. Do you mind if I just skip the three-minute introduction and say, "You know the rules"?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And the first person to testify is Will Rutherford. So, how do we do this now? Come right up to that imaginary podium right there. Speak into the microphone. Will, if you put a table, chair. Good evening. I'll keep this kind of short tonight, which is maybe unusual for me, but I think I can make it in three minutes. All I want to do is give a lot of accolades to your communications team and the listening sessions that they've been doing since June, I guess. Adam Spencer, Mark Zinnaker, Jeremy Samoche and Lisa, in particular. But I know that's backed up by a lot of people who did a lot of studying, a lot of analysis, a lot of numbers. And it was, I attended nearly every one of the listening sessions up the river, just 'cause. And I heard this one tonight down here. And I don't think you could have prepared a team any better than those folks probably prepared themselves with the visual aids, the audio stuff, and the way they handle issues, questions, challenges. I saw it all. And E-Web should be really, really proud to have people like this on your stand, representing you, even though many of you weren't physically standing there. I know you were in the numbers someplace. It was just a well-done effort. Thank you. Thank you, Will. We really appreciate that. Thanks very much. Tom, would you like to come up to our?
Yes, and it's Tana. Tana.
Tana.
Hi. Yeah, Shepherd, also known as Ego Chick. Hi. I didn't prepare a statement. I just told Frank I'd come this time because we met last month. I just wanted to let you know, I just came from the salmon workshop with over 30 participants in person, and I did another 25 on Tuesday through Zoom. So, salmon trips are on, 65 tanks out in the classrooms, and so, lots of excitement around that. And so, again, without your generous support, we would not be able to serve students in that way. Bethel was also at my training, so Bethel, Kathy and I were both there. And then, working on keeping the virtual aspect up and going so anybody can access that. Same with the EV challenge later in the year. And so, just overall, I just want to thank you and just kind of, if I'm really, like, super exhausted, because my feet are literally on the ground and I'm around people all the time again, so it feels really invigorating and, again, super grateful to be able to do this role and with your sponsorship. So, thank you very much. And yeah, more eventually. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ann? I know this is out of work. Can I have 20 more seconds? You can. Excuse me for this. I just, Jeri Oster, who has come to you with a couple of different petitions, was supposed to be here tonight, I thought. She said she, and she probably got tangled up in the traffic if she came down Beltline. But she has some more petitions, I believe, that she wants to share with you. So, even when she gets here, I wonder if she could be accommodated. Yeah, if she wants to deliver the petitions, I'll just, if you're still here, Will, just point her out to me and I'll interrupt and we'll go from there. I'm not going to open up a public session, but if she wants to present them to the... Well, she knows what to do, too. Thank you, though. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I closed the public input. Comments from Commissioners? Any comments?
I'd just say thanks for making the time to be here, and I know what you're thinking.
I have a quick question on the Salmon Watch Program, if I may. I saw an article on the news the other night where Coburn Charter was up at our spawning channel. Is that part of your program or is that independent?
She is a double-dipper, and so, she participates with the, it used to be a community water show, but now it's the Middle Fork folks. So, she does a trip with them, and she also works with me.
Okay, because I, you know, because I've been kind of advocating getting not just the public schools, but making sure we're doing the equity thing, because there's a lot of private schools, and Coburn Charter is not a public school. And so, I was just wondering if they're...
They are technically charters, are public schools. They do receive funding and services from our district, and Coburn is under the umbrella of RJ.
I know it's on a, yeah.
And same with Village. And I guess, and I'm breaking the rules now, but that was one thing that we, Frank and a group of us met about this very thing and ways to make some of the content that I am producing available to anyone that would like to access it. And so, that is something that is in the dialogue process right now, and it's something that I'm...
That's good, because I just, I'm not complaining. I'm more of a merrier. And I saw it looked like it was really good and productive, but I just didn't know that they were in Charter School also with them. So, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? If not, I thank you both. And when she comes, if she comes with them, I'll make sure I accommodate that. Thank you. Okay, the next agenda item is going to be the Consent Calendar A. I have a question about one item. I don't know if it's A or B, is it contact Karen for Recreation Design Services? Is that an A or B? Is it an A? Okay, I'd like to pull that for a question. Sorry, I didn't get it done earlier. Any other items of Consent Calendar A?
Moving through the remainder?
Second?
Second.
Second by Schlossberg. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The one I asked is about the, it's, again, the Carmen Smith Design Services, and I just don't know if Karen can answer this question or not, or if somebody can.
Lisa Crenz is online, I believe, and she's the person that would answer those questions.
I'm seeing we're running a whole bunch of these and these upgrades and things, and looking at the amount of this, but just a little thing that struck out to me was $100,000 for site management, for sign management. Just curious how $100,000 could be spent on managing signs.
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. The Sign Management Program is a part of our Recreation and Aesthetics Management Plan under the Carmen License. It includes both interpretive signage, cultural and resource signage, fisheries signage, those sorts of things that need to be managed over the course of the license. So, it includes design, fabrication, installation and all of that. It does, it sounds like a large number, but there's quite a number of signs on that. I can get more detail to you on what's included in that scope, if that would be helpful.
No, I was just kind of commenting, because you said that the design engineering bid for sign procurement is $200,000, and then, it's $100,000 to manage them. And I just was wondering if that was a big, you know, if that's, since we don't do this all the time, I'm sorry I'm getting into the weeds, but I just was thinking that that seems like a lot of money to manage a sign. I mean, do you have any response to that or any experience with it?
I guess I would say that there's scores of signs up there that include design and installation and management over the life of the license. It does sound like a high number, so if you, if you'd like, I can pull more details on that and get back to you.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry to put you to that work, but I saw the $200,000 to design and create them and $100,000 to manage them. And that was, that's over the 40-year license? It's $100,000 for 40 years or $100,000 for the term of this contract, five years?
Yeah, it's for the term of the contract for five years, but presumably that will set us up for very little maintenance over time. But again, I think I should probably get more information and get back to you.
If you don't, don't throw too much effort. I'm just curious, you know, kind of watching dollars, how we spend $100,000 managing signs. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll move to adopt, I don't know which one that was in the...
Item two.
Item two in Consent Calendar A. Is there a second? Second, any discussion? All of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent Calendar B. Anybody want to pull anything?
Pull number three, please.
Number three is pulled by Borowski. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adopt absent item three.
Move to approve the remainder?
Second. Session, all of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Borowski, three is yours.
So, three is increasing our legal contract from 3.2 to 10, over $10 million. It's allocated out, and I'm just wondering, you know, some of the short list... Yeah, mute it. Mute it. Okay, there we go. So, it says some of his public farm, Lieber Walterville Strategic Analysis, Lieber Regulatory and Lieber Property Acquisitions. Are those, is part of that $7 million being allocated into the numbers that we're looking at, that we're looking at the $20 million or $220 million or $180 million? Is that, where is that going into our decision-making with that?
So, the assessment for special counsel in this case would be part of the analysis process. It would not be included in the $200,000. There is only a portion of it that is for that, the specialty services in that case have a lot to do with power contracts, assessment of modeling and the value from a legal perspective of those of which we have to deal with, which could include FERC, by the way. But I don't believe that those are in the $200,000.
$200 million.
Sorry, $200 million.
So, for me, I guess, again, we're seeing little things. We see a number, $183 million for alternative blank, $230 for alternative blank. But then, he, over the past two or three board meetings, I keep seeing millions of dollars being spent on the Lieber project that aren't in those numbers. So, to me, is there a way that we're tracking the, all of these numbers that are being attributed to this project that aren't in our scenario one, two, three and four?
Yeah. Oh, I can get you for a little down there.
Lisa chimed in and said legal is included in our estimates.
So, part of this $7 million is going to the 200, into scenario one, two, three and four?
Correct. So, legal services are included in all of the net present values for all four alternatives, a portion of which is anticipated over the course of this contract with Cable Houston, but not all of it. But the net present values that you're seeing do include our estimate of legal services for all alternatives.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments on that agenda item? Not entertain a motion regarding Consent Calendar B, item three?
Please approve.
Second.
Session, all of the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reposed, passes unanimously. The next agenda item, City of Eugene Liaison Update. President John Brown, Vice President Sarnicall, and General Manager, who would like to touch with the group up at our meeting with them. Frank?
Go for it, Frank.
Okay, Frank, thank you.
Oh, great, thank you. So, Commissioners, we met with city leadership and really primarily did some information sharing from E-Web's perspective. We shared a little bit more about the public safety power shut-off and how that decision process was working, because there were some differences in how we handled it in the South Hills, for example, versus up the McKenzie Valley. We also shared some information and updates on where we were in the process relative to a second water treatment plant in Glenwood. We are working with the city as well on changes to the Public Facility Services Plan and part of that process. Shared some information also and thanked the city for their cooperation at the emergencies site launch for the Sheldon Emergency Water Station. President Brown was there as well. And a little bit of information on two things related to what the city's contemplating relative to electrification and other things. One was gave them a little more definitive timeframe on IRP process, Integrated Resources Planning process. And then, also that we plan on, at the end of the year, publishing our first version of the Climate Guidebook, the E-Web Climate Guidebook, which will have a number of technical references and talk about things such as carbon intensity and other things. They also shared a little bit about their process and agreed that as they go down and evaluate various motions around electrification and the natural gas and electricity, that they would reach out to E-Web for further information as needed. They see that as a number of steps coming up relative to information that's going to be shared by the Good Company and a number of other work sessions potentially. And so, we were curious about the timing more than anything of that and their process related to E-Web, and so, they shared that that's going to be a number of months still as they go through that process. So, President Brown?
They did come up with actually sharing that document.
Pardon me?
The document from the study that was done, when we asked about it and they shared it on the website.
I'll follow up on that. That was the first study from the Good Company did, which was a residential study.
That's on the website.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, we did come out and ask if you want us to weigh in on some of the decisions, and they said yes. And I was surprised to hear the mayor say that she didn't think, she thought that we may not get to the full access this year. I said, "Do you want anything from us?" She said, "Yeah." You're getting it. And so, it's good. Seems kind of like, sometimes conversations are a little dark. And just to kind of get the dialogue going. And they did ask if we were going to leverage grants from, about second source, about getting money for that and things, you know, for reservation and that are helping. Huge natural impact it has on our rate shares. And so, it was, overall...
You know, the past week talked about the kind of sorts that the mayor is on, the building codes, and also generally how can they impact change. You talked a little bit about that as well.
Yeah, she's on the State Committee of... Overall, okay, Manny?
Maybe this is a critical, but do people pay attention to what's going on in City Council? It seems to get, like, more press or whatever. Would it be possible to ask them and help get out the word that we're getting input on the Lieber Dam issue, just to make an announcement, maybe, at one of their council meetings or...
You're looking at me? I'm, you're preaching to the choir. I'm the one, I want more input, if we can get it, from the 80-some-on-thousand people here. And that's, I think we've got the public information people, the General Manager listening. I think if there's a way to bridge that, they will figure that out.
Think outside of the box and they make use of this relationship, this one thing that we have with them, maybe that'll be looking how come.
What was the meeting?
I can look.
That's okay. I'm just wondering if it would be advantageous to try and schedule the next meeting close to the first of the year or right after the first of the year, so that if we can dovetail our legislative, if we could say, "What are you looking at sending up in Salem? What are we looking at sending up in Salem? Can we, you know, endorse some of your priorities? And can you help us endorse some of our priorities in your legislative affairs?" You know, can Jason tell us what he's looking for? And can we ask them what they're looking for? And maybe we could do it more of a united front between the two. Might be a talking point at the next meeting, and that's why I'm saying possibly try and do it before the legislative session starts or soon thereafter. That might be something.
I think you're not just saying coordinate our lobbying efforts, but perhaps do joint lobbying with city councillors, with board members and councillors, or are you just...
No, I'm just saying, you know, they've got lobbyists going up to Salem looking at things. We've got lobbyists going up to Salem advocating for things. If their lobbyist is going into the room and saying, you know, "We need this," but, you know, there's also, E-Web's looking for second source on the level. And, you know, they could mention that as one of helping with their priorities. And if they have priorities that we can dovetail into some of our priorities, it just, again, everybody that goes into the room is helpful.
Yeah, and I would just say, I guarantee that the staff are already at that level. But it might be interesting for us, as we're doing lobbying days, if we do that again, to bring in council members and do that together.
Well, I mean, it's council, just like we do. Council says that they bring the legislative agenda to the council and the council approves it. And so, we can get some of our things on their council agenda.
Ray?
We can do a couple of things, I think, at different levels. So, I can ask Jason to, part of his recommendation in December, actually, we're doing some of it in November, and then, a final approval in December, to understand where there's commonality with the city, and just include that in his report. I know he and Ethan Nelson were close together at the staff level. From a leadership perspective, there may be opportunities, such as you're talking about, to have E-Web leadership, you know, at least be understanding of the priorities from the city and E-Web, to see if there's opportunities when it was generally talking about it with legislators. So, I think there's a staff level, and then, there's potentially a leadership level.
And that goes back to the question that I asked Jason last month. Can you come up with a memo of things? I haven't seen that memo.
Yeah, and we are in process of working on that. We have a few talking points. He's also working on a leave behind, so that if you're actually talking to a legislator, you can actually leave something with them. So, we're working on a number of different things.
Yeah, John, that's, I appreciate that, but I've spent more time trying to schedule these meetings with the city than I've been in the meetings. I mean, it's really challenging to get it. And we only had one of the two participants from the city at the last meeting. And so, it's been a huge challenge to get these meetings to go. And Sonia, you had something?
And that person, no one's here today.
Do you have a meeting? Today, so it would be very good.
It's a new person that would be there in this meeting. I did want to note, you know that we've typically done those meetings in February, but honestly, the legislators that live in the area and the fourth session, you actually get more time to do them. You actually want to be, have big issues, you want to... I don't know that we do this time. It may not warrant it. Actually, sometimes easier for them to meet in the session when you don't have 15...
I saw you have the... She made this on Saturday, and, you know, she said, "Hey, $20 million for second source."
The one issue that we already know is, is a primary issue for us, has to do with the loss of water rights when it comes to hydro generation. And so, that is one that we would probably want to go on the offense with. We do have a sponsor for that and some language being developed, but that's an example of to get out in front of it and before the session starts.
Use us to have the contacts.
Is that for the warm springs?
Yeah, that was the Supreme Court ruling that...
Are you able to show your sponsors?
Senator Manning.
So, we can thank him. Anything else? Okay, well, that's next agenda item number eight, the draft upcoming year Electric and Water Well, that's next agenda item number eight, the draft upcoming year electric and water budgets and long-term financial plans.
I'm actually not talking tonight. I'm here to answer questions, but I'm going to hand it over to the very capable staff who put in all the hard work here.
Your show.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Tim Marie Harwood, Financial Services Manager. And with me this evening is Erin Ballmer, Fiscal Services Supervisor, and Alicia Borges, Lead Financial Analyst, and our CFO, Deborah. So the last time you saw the long-term financial plan was back in July, when we had brought forth and with their respective assumptions. This evening, we have the updated long-term financial plans for you to review, and we are seeking direction on the 2023 budget document. Next month, we will return with a more detailed draft budget document along with proposed pricing proposals and hold the first to two public hearings on proposed prices. The second public hearing on prices will be in December, at which point the board may adopt the pricing proposal and approve a final 2023 budget document. That, let's dive right on in, and I'll pass it on to Alicia to provide the updates on the long-term financial plans.
Good evening, Commissioner. As Tia mentioned, we last presented the 10-year long-term financial plans in July. And since that time, we have completed the preliminary 2023 budgets, and those have been incorporated as the base, as the base gear in the plans. Additionally, the plans include the 2022 projected year-end cash flow to establish 2023 beginning cash balances. We have also updated labor costs and FTE trajectory, updated revenue forecasts, as well as interest earning assumptions for our cash reserves. Turning to the electric utility, power market factors were updated, which impacted both purchase power and wholesale revenue. We refined assumptions around capital expenditures and funding for the capital plants related to debt issuances, reserves, and rate funded capital. All metrics are above target throughout the plan, though day's cash is strained for much of that time. This is due to the use of rate funded cash to fund capital infrastructure investments as well as increased debt issuance from large debt issuances in 2026 and 2029. Despite the large debt issuances, we are within four targets for debt service coverage while remaining within the current rate trajectory bounds. Significant investment in Leberg, however, has not been incorporated into this plan, and we are waiting for direction on that project. The plan continues to assume a 10-year compounded rate increase of approximately thirty-seven percent, which falls within the bounds of the inflation rate forecast. And the plan also continues to model a smoothing of the revenue requirement throughout the plan. Due to the budget updates we made to the plan, we are now modeling a lower rate increase of three and a quarter percent for 2023. Next slide, please. Here is a summary of the electric long-term financial plan key metrics that was also included in your board packets in the attachment section of the budget memo. The yellow shading indicates when the metrics are nearing targets, and the 10-year rate trajectory is displayed at the bottom of the table. I'm going to pause for a few moments so you can absorb this slide. Okay, please. We have the updated assumptions to the water utility plan in a similar manner to the electric utility. All metrics are above target, though the plan models that debt service coverage is strained in the latter half of the plan as a result of the large debt issuance in 2026 to fund Willamette Water Treatment Plan. We continue to model an increase in the revenue requirement for 2023 of six percent to fund significant infrastructure investments. The initial six years rate increases for the rate trajectory are steeper than the latter four years due to infrastructure work on reservoirs and the Willamette Water Treatment Plan. Without the treatment plant and watershed restoration work expected to be funded by grants, the rate trajectory is within the bounds of the inflation rate allowable forecast. Furthermore, recent market comparator analysis has indicated we have a large degree of market headroom among our comparators, though we will review more in detail in November. Next slide, please. And here is the summary of the water long-term financial plan key metrics. And again, the yellow shading indicates those metrics are nearing targets, and your trajectory is displayed at the bottom. Pause here so you can absorb this slide. And now Erin will provide an overview of draft 2023 and prior year budgets. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Alicia. Good evening, commissioners. Again, Erin Ballmer, Fiscal Services Supervisor, for the record. And we're shifting from the 10-year long-term financial plan and focusing on the upcoming year's budgets. So operationally, supply chain challenges persist, and the 2022 inflationary environment has been hot. Annual inflation indexes running in the eight to 12% range since the start of the year. The Federal Reserve is messaging further aggressive rate actions are on the horizon, and 2023 budgets assume inflation rates that are more conservative, even slightly higher than recent Federal Reserve projections for 2023. Increases tied to inflation assumptions for capital and other O and M total eight and a half million for the electric utilities. So hopefully to be expected, 2023 draft budgets are higher than 2022's. Draft budgets for each utility are 23% higher year over year. The electric utility draft budget is $74 million more than last year, with purchase power expense being the bulk of that and increasing $44 million due to higher budgeted volumes and prices. It's important to note, this increase in purchase power expense is more than offset by increasing wholesale sales revenue, as higher market prices model as a net benefit to the electric utility. Energy market price assumptions have increased from $51 in 2022 to $80 per minute watt hour due to scarcity, which contributes to market volatility, and is represented in the overly simplified supply and demand curve that's in the upper left of the slide. The topic of regional resource adequacy moves large and is making waves in markets. But increases are not all inflation and market dynamics. The 2023 draft budgets include tangible steps toward making good on the strategic plan. Capital plans represented by the photo of the powerhouse are of $19 million from 2022 and include significant ones to perform relicensing obligated performance, substation improvements that enhance our resilience line, efforts on E-Web's enterprise solution implementation that will modernize our legacy systems, and continued advanced meter infrastructure deployment that's core to creating operational and consumption flexibility, as well as compulsory improvements to maintain and improve system reliability and safety. Draft budgets for the other O and M category are up $10.3 million from 2022 and also include increases specific to executing the strategic plan. Big changes are ahead, as noted on the slide, and draft budgets include baseline and service level increases related to conservation incentives that can mitigate deep flows, electrification programs in support of decarbonizing building heating and cooling systems, as well as the transportation sector. And we'll note that for the electrification programs on the transportation sector, those are funded by clean fuel credit revenues. Additional baseline and service level increases related to engaging consultants to further inform the integrated resource plan and assist in organizing market readiness are included in these draft budgets, as well as remediation efforts related to the trail bridge sinkholes. Also of note, vegetation management efforts to maintain safety and reliability, as well as labor increases to improve and maintain operational performance are included. As mentioned earlier, when Alicia was presenting on the long-term financial plans, 2023 draft budgets come with a 3.25% revenue requirement increase. Switching to the water utility, increases in the water draft budget also further the strategic plan. The 2023 draft budget is $14 million higher than 2022. Again, that's a 23% increase year over year. And resiliency and recovery efforts in the McKenzie watershed are $6.2 million higher than 2022 levels. This higher spending anticipates additional funding from grants to support the watershed recovery efforts. In the other O and M category, it is $4 million higher than last year due to a 4% shift in shared services allocations and labor increases, and that is referenced by the pie chart on the slide. And then looking to the capital plants for 2023, $3 million higher, and they include enhancing resiliency for base level storage by finishing the East Fortieth Storage Project. There's a recent photo of that included on the slide. Also included are corresponding transmission main projects to link the new storage facility to the system, as well as we'll begin planning for the Willamette Treatment Plan. Also of note for the water utility, the E-Web Enterprise Solution implementation efforts, again, to modernize our legacy systems, as well as continued AMI deployment core to creating that operational and consumption flexibility. And not to be forgotten at any rate either are the compulsory improvements in the capital plan needed to maintain and improve system reliability and safety. So 2023 draft budgets for the water utility come to a 6% revenue requirement increase. Looking to next steps, this evening's agenda includes a public hearing, and following that, staff look forward to receiving further direction from the board. This is an iterative process, and we'll be back in November with more detail to the draft budgets, as well as the draft proposals, which will include tasks among customer classes, as well as any changes that may be directed this evening. Again, November provides additional opportunity for public testimony and more direction before we will return in December, seeking board action on 2023 budgets and prices. And so with that, I'll turn it back to President Brown.
Thank you. And procedurally, the way this is structured is we have this information, we have the public hearing, wait for any public testimony, and then we have the discussion and direction, we want to give them direction in the next agenda item right after the public hearing. Sound good?
So when do we ask questions about the presentation that just happened?
After the public hearing. That's the way it's set up. This was informational, just an update. They were going to give us an update. Then we have the public hearing, and then we have direction. But if, I mean, if you want to ask questions, we got time. I mean, you want to do it now, you want to do it after, after the public hearing. Public hearing is going to be a gavel in, gavel out. I don't think we have anybody signed up.
Also noted on here at 7:55.
That's correct. And when somebody shows up at that time and wants to testify, we'll open it back up.
Well, I've got questions. Whatever you want me to ask them, I'll.
I have a question about the electric rate increase, the average. So did you say that Leberg cost would not include it in that projection? Is that true? I guess, I'm just curious, I know that we don't know which option we're going to choose, but we still have a idea-ish of how much it's going to cost theoretically, it can cost more or less. But is it possible to see, like, if we just pick the middle, middle number or range to see what that would do to the rates? That's one question. And then my other question kind of related to that is, once we do pick a track, how long will it take for us to see some of those costs? Is it immediate? Will it take some years? Go ahead.
We have all kinds of people available to talk, so I'll give my answer, and then folks can tag on as they see. When you say see those costs, are you talking about having them actually cash out the door or modeled for you?
Cash out the door. Like, when will we start spending significant amounts of money?
So from the project team, most of those costs, there's a little bit of difference as to which alternative. Most of those costs don't hit until the early part of the 2030s or in the mid part of the 2030s. From that standpoint, if you were to look at funding those when they occur, you would typically go out, you would borrow for those. And so, you know, Deborah and I have talked about late 2020, early 2030s for some of the first borrowing. Probably not borrow the whole thing, but you would start to see the repayment of those occurring in the 2030s. So it's almost outside of the planning window that we're talking about, unless the board decided that they wanted to do something before that time, sort of pre-fund some of this work, that's a little bit of a different discussion. And until we really feel like we know the direction, then that's probably a premature conversation. But consistent with your thoughts, Deborah?
It was, and we have done some, we have done some calculation that roughs out the impact based on borrowing. And about 1%, if we assume that there's not headroom in our debt service coverage, will cover about $20 million of borrowing.
You want to be?
Three questions. The funds, where did I, the restabilization funds, 22 million for electric, 15 million for water. Where and how do you see those being spent? First question, and since the clock's going down, I'm going to give you all three of my questions, and then you can respond. The other thing that would be helpful for me when I'm talking to my constituents is when I say a 3.25% increase in electric and 6.6% increase in water, can you give me a dollar amount for an average bill, what that would be? So that I can say, you know, okay, the average house bill is $220 a month. What, how much of an increase is that going to be? Just like when people go out for a bond or levy, they say it's going to be $40 a year or whatever. If I could get that number, that would be helpful. So people, when I say it's going up 3.25%, I can say on average, that's this much. And then the last one was on the water side, why did the shared service go up so much? I mean, I know, I think I understand what shared services are, cleaning the building, doing all of that. How come there was such a large increase in shared service for water? Those are my three questions.
On the shared services, we do an analysis every several years, and the indication that we're getting from that analysis is that we need to equitably spread those costs between utilities.
So it was in a, it was a reallocation. It's a reallocation between water and utilities.
Yeah, I understand. It just seemed like, you know, it's like, okay, oops, you guys here paid a lot more water, 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 kind of like a COSA, some, what you're saying is they haven't been paying their fair share, and you did an analysis and found out that they needed to pay more.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
So you have three questions?
Yeah, the rate stabilization was the third.
So on the electric side, the rate stabilization funds, I think the first year, most of it, I'd say 12 million, will be going towards paying for Carmen Smith to reduce the amount of borrowing that we have to, we're looking to potentially take place in 2023. And then the remainder, the rate stabilization funds, about 10 million will take place in 2024.
So when you're saying this 22 million, are you funding that or are you taking that out of rate stabilization?
We're funding the plant, the capital plant. We're taking it out of the rate stabilization resource.
Well, the balance of rate stabilization, will rate stabilization be?
At target.
Five million?
And similar situation for the water. We'll be using it to fund type two capital work, and it's split almost in half and will be down to its target by the end of 2024.
I do think it's worthwhile to note that if the utilities perform better than budgeted, we wouldn't automatically draw that out of the rate stabilization. And when we talked about highest and best use of cash, that money would be there to reallocate.
Is that the first priority for highest and best use? I mean, is there a board policy on the best use of, or what I? I mean, is there a board policy on, on the best use of, or what I used to call marginal beginning working capital at the end of the year?
I don't think necessarily that it would be a first priority. We would look and see things like our ability to defer borrowing, evaluate all of our other reserves, and ensure that they were appropriate, and bring a recommendation back to the board about what they leave those funds, add to those funds, because we had a really strong year, and that'll come in soon.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Third, sorry. Third question was on.
Cost.
Yes, what it would look like for an average consumer. We will bring that information to you in the November packet.
That's your.
I have four questions. And the first one's picking up on where you left off, and I think we talked about this in a previous meeting, so forgive me, but you remind us if there's a downside to pre-funding some of the Lieberg work. Yeah, in order just to reduce that total maximum increase in, in rates? And especially knowing that, as Mindy said, like, we know there's at least a minimum amount that we're going to be paying this. Remind us the downsides of refunding any of it?
We currently have the capacity to borrow and take advantage of that and spread that out over 30 years. So I guess that's more about the advantage of waiting until we have a number and accessing our borrowing ability. Frank is waving in.
Oh, I was just going to say, the downside of pre-borrowing is you're sitting on a bunch of cash until you have to use it. And we aren't really the best investor relative to our conservative approaches to that. If the capacity is there to borrow, then you either have to look at your, you're offsetting unattractive borrowing, or you're trying to time your borrowing for when you're using it. So the downside of sort of pre-collecting that is that you're not going to be using it until you need it. So it's, you're just sitting on it, basically.
Right, but if I'm, I'm not suggesting that we would borrow money in advance. I'm suggesting we would actually raise our rates slightly now in order to create a greater cushion. But I think what I'm hearing you saying is that really our borrowing is the best way to pay for this, and so refunding it, we, is just not.
And again, you're taking it away from your customers, and you're sitting on it at a very low investment rate, because we have to be incredibly conservative statutorily. So it's, it's better when you look at sort of comparing the rates to just fund it when you need it.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, I appreciate that.
Question number two, when we look at the, the long 10-year plan and the electric utility in particular, the general rate increase is going kind of up and down over the course of years. Is that something we would smooth out, or is there a reason that we have 3.25% increase one year and then a 0.75% the next year?
Yeah, go to the bottom line.
Am I missing that?
Yeah, there's the, there's the total at the very bottom.
EPA increase, it comes every other year. Thank you. Okay, that was a pretty long one. Thank you. Okay, and then mentioned that currently, the fact that we're long on power helps us. I think we all have a sense of that. And so my question is, at what point are we forecast to no longer be long on power? And how are we, how, how does that get baked into our forecasting?
So as part of the IRP discussion, if you look at the timing of the contracts between 2026 and 2028, we will, I wouldn't say moving from long, we will be repositioned by that, so by that time. So we would gear that toward 2028. Now, from a financial perspective, as part of looking at that going forward, when we get through the IRP, we'll have to do some financial modeling to couple with that. So it's, they aren't standalone, they have to work together. But I would say, if, just to answer direct, it's probably 2028.
Okay, that helps, thank you. And then, then I didn't know, the oral presentation, I'm completely amazed at how you all distill really complex information and make it digestible for people that are not as smart like me. So thank you again for the presentation. The last question I have is about where you think our greatest financial risk exposure is. I mean, there's, you see the whole picture, Deborah, and I'm just curious, like, where are the pieces that you're looking at and that you're greatest concern? I assume they're probably all already on our radar, but if they're not.
They're on your radar. I continue to watch inflation, the Fed action and supply chain disruptions that started with COVID and continue with, with the war. And so those are really top of mind for me. We also have some very large investments that we need to make. No surprises, and Frank wants to add one of his topics.
It's not a surprise either. I mean, we have a whole risk management committee that is looking at the risks associated with the power markets, for example, on the electric side, and what kind of reserves we need to have to mitigate the fluctuations that can occur if, if we get into scarcity situations or capacity situations. So we have a whole system set up to look at that, along with just, you know, the investments versus inflation and some of these other things, and, you know, financial teams looking at those really constantly. On the water side, I think we're in a really good position to, to not think about just the next decade, but what does this look like in the long term? We're trying to secure any, any risks around water rights, for example, going forward, enhancing our water rights. Water is becoming scarce throughout the West, and so we could expect that there would be some migration into this area. So what does growth look like from a risk perspective? And then on the water side, we have some large investments, like, like a second, like a second drinking water source. And on the electric side, we've, we've heard it, there's, I think Tyler referred to it as the lump in the snake, where we had all of this investment in the, in the 60s and 70s. And if you think about the age of that equipment now, it is all aging as one big lump. And so we're looking at, you know, 10 to 20 years of probably larger than typical investments in infrastructure on the electric side. And that's, that's why you're seeing some of this, that we're projecting out, and you say, oh my gosh, it's, you know, 3%, 4% rate increases every year, which is consistent with our direction around inflation. But we're investing pretty heavily to try to sort of handle those two situations.
Thank you. Thank you. Sonya?
Two questions. So we're voting on Lieberg in December, and we're voting on the budget in December. But the budget doesn't have Lieberg as a part of that, is that because Lieberg real costs don't really come into effect in 2023? Or how are we going to adjust the 2023 budget based on the decision that happened that outcome?
So those significant costs, we're expecting in late, in the late 2020s and early 2030s. We do have $2 million for emergent issues on Lieberg, so the money that, that we anticipate that we would have to spend is included in this budget. In the long-term.
I thought I heard earlier she said.
For the long-term financial plan, as you looked at that, it does not have a large spend on Lieberg in it. For the upcoming budget, it has what we anticipate for 2023.
And I would, I would add, Commissioner Carlson, the long-term financial plan on the electric side, come next year when you see it in July, will look dramatically different. I'll, I'll just say it now, I'll leave it at that.
So I know that we, we always divided out the electric and the water side. Is that how the rating agencies look at us, or do they look at it, they look at it just as completely separate? Okay. I was hoping that maybe there was maybe some overlay that we could do on some of those challenged metrics. It's not helped at all, but if it doesn't, okay.
Appreciate the thought, but they are rated as separate utilities.
Okay. All right. Those are my two things.
I have two quick questions, a follow-up to what Sonya was talking about. On this budget we're talking about right now, tonight, we just passed up an amendment for legal services for another $7 million, and we were told that that was for Lieberg and those things. So that's in this budget, that $7 million we passed this evening?
So Lisa, for the Lieberg costs.
Yeah, the $7 million, the one that was in the consecutive.
Those are incorporated, and a piece of those were also quality farm buyer legal, which is also.
Okay, but that, that, that $7 million is in this budget. So if we look at the budget from 2021 to 2022, we look at that increase, I can't remember what that number was, we just increased $7 million in spending. Where's that?
It was for five years. That was a five.
There's three more years term on that contract? Or is it five? I'd have to put on my glasses.
It's a five-year contract?
It was originally a five-year contract.
And that's funded in what budget?
So it's in, the money that we will spend in 2023 is incorporated into the budget.
Okay, that's fine. And the second one, just, can you go back to that slide that shows the electric? I think it's 14 million for debt service? Keep going. You, you had, you had the. You had, you had the difference between last year and this year, and you had that comparison. It was, debt service is 17 million on the electric. How much debt is that 17 million in debt service serve? What's your electric debt? Well, I'd kind of like to get an idea of the 17 million to serve, how many million? And we've got a couple hundred million coming up. It gives me an idea, because those are.
So on the couple hundred million, it's about a percent for every 20 million is our ballpark estimate.
How much, how much money that, I mean, if that 17 million is serving, how much debt?
Almost there. You've got the numbers right there.
Just to help me, okay, you can give it to me later. So that's all I have. So we're done with that, then I'm going to go into public hearing. Anybody sign up to testify? No, of course, public hearing. And we'll go to agenda item number 11. Oh, no. Technically, we can have a break, but you guys want to roll? We've only got one more agenda item, and that's.
The following agenda item was direction, do you have?
Yeah, no, now we, now we give you direction.
After the break.
No, if we're going to take a break. You guys want a break? Keep going? Okay, we're going to go. So the next is item number 11. Now we give you direction. So I'll open it up to the board, if anybody want to give them direction on where to go, what, from what you've seen.
I mean, you heard that in July, we'll have a better idea for the long-term financials and what that will look like. So I guess my direction would be, it'd be nice to see that, but I'm willing to wait until July when we have a grasp.
I would, I would say that part of the reason that it's fine for July in the long-term financial plan is when you look at the outer, the outer period of that 10 years, is when you're starting to see some of these substantial costs come in. There's really no impact on any of the decision around Lieberg for 2023. So from a budgetary standpoint, it really is inconsequential.
So, well, we need medication before we get to that presentation in July.
You'll, you'll get a little bit of medication in both November and December as we talk about Lieberg, but yeah, we can arrange for whatever therapy you need.
You want to be?
Yeah, so I, I feel comfortable with you guys moving forward with these numbers that you have here. I think 2023 is, is kind of a straightforward. This is where we were in 2022. These are our, our stressors in 2023. The one-year budget is different than the long-term. The long-term one is, is going to be the, the tough nut to, to crack. I do, I mean, it, it is a significant increase, you know? Each one of those was, was big. I mean, from 327 to 400 million on the electric side, $70 million increase just on the electric side is big, and it's, that explained. But I'm hoping that that's an abnormality rather than the norm, you know? I mean, obviously, we're going to have a big one because of the, of the Lieberg project, but the other.
So probably not, Commissioner? And then the reason I say that is part of the big reason for the, this is only the expense side. So the revenue side associated with wholesale electric sales goes up as well. So what, you're only seeing half of that equation, and we will continue to be long for another several years. And if the market remains strong or gets stronger, you will see bumps on the expense side that are pretty substantial. But those are offset by revenue. So that's, that's why it's, you're only seeing, that, seeing half of that equation. So the abnormality of that will depend a little bit on the strength of the markets.
So when do I see the other half of the equation? When the budget comes out?
Yeah.
Or when it's reconciled at the end of, I mean, you don't know what you sold it for until.
No, we have forecasts, and those are included in the budget.
So you'll see the revenue side of that when we bring back the budget.
Okay.
It was a net favorable for next year.
Okay, well, anyways, I, I feel that the, the numbers that you gave us here are, are good numbers to build the budget off of. I guess that's the direction that you're asking for us from today. I won't be at the next meeting, so I may need, or at the November meeting, when the budget's presented, I'll be able to see it, and maybe I can schedule some time after I get back from my vacation to sit down and answer questions, ask questions before I have to make the determination to December.
Sonya, you think for.
I just, I wanted to say that I appreciate the work that you've done to smooth. More that we can do that to help our customers. Those places can shift.
Not any direction.
No, I just reiterate, yeah, the smoothing is, is kind of paramount.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all too, firstly, because you've taken, you know, you're one of several groups that can come up here and take a topic that I used to just let go in one ear and out the other. But actually, I understand it, and I appreciate it much more than I have in the past. So thank you very much for, you know, synthesizing a very complex thing into something that a layperson can understand. I really, really appreciate that. I don't really appreciate 70% over 10 years for water. That's not your fault. You're just, you know, don't shoot the messenger. So I won't, but I thank you, and I, you've given me everything I need. So without anything else, then that will conclude this agenda item, and I want to thank you all. And just remember, raise everybody's rates but ours, so anyhow. That's not going to work.
I also want to thank the entire fiscal team there, folks. Ryan is here this evening, and there are several folks at home who did a lot of effort into this.
Yeah.
Presentation and the materials that's.
Well, I know you can just give us an Excel spreadsheet and say, here, cheers. But you do it in a way that, that not only to us, but to the listening audience, it makes it presentable, because this, this is, like I say, a commodity that people don't have a choice on, and we're raising it. And, and we've got to make sure that we do it properly, and I thank you all for the detail and the explanation you give us. Good, just go from there. So thank you very much.
And your number is 240. 240 million in principal.
So 17 million a year in.
Service.
Yeah, service, just 240, so I do math. That's a pretty big, yeah. So if we have to serve debt on 200 million at IRA.
All right, 240.
Service. It's, it's a big number. All right, well, thank you very much. So the next is correspondence. Do you have any others? Right.
President Brown, there were four pieces of correspondence in the packet this month. They were, they were all informational items. One on dam safety, one on the headquarters transition. There was an update on the Willamette Water Treatment Plan, where that process is. And then there was also one on the Lieberg Canal TBL, which showed some relative to TBL issues and, you know, the social, economic, and environmental. Tomorrow, I will give the board a tool that you can do some, some of your own reading of those and provide, it'll come with some instructions that we would like to get your feedback on, to be able to go through the, the various issues associated with that decision. Those were all informational items, and if you had any questions, could be handy to answer any of those.
Sonya?
On the Lieberg ratings system for each of those, I'm just curious, maybe in the next update we have tonight, each of those had different ratings. I'm just curious how they got to the plus one, the minus one. Each of those have different numbers that seems like it could be very. Each of those have different numbers that seems like it could be very subjective to get that. I'm just curious.
Yeah, those, those are relative, and within each category, we tried to explain why this one might be a plus one or a minus one. But those were very specific for each one.
We also hope that we can start that. All of it maybe in one, so you could see the different categories together and kind of the estimation of them?
We will get that tomorrow. That made a spreadsheet that you get to actually play around with. Well, this, this particular category is more important to me than that one, and you can wait differently to see how your decision-making process might be altered by your own priorities. And that's, that's what we're going to try to understand. So that when we come together for the meeting on October 25th, we can supply the board a little bit of information around this is where you tend to, to think alike. This is where you tend to have some differences of opinion. And so the board can, can have a productive discussion, really roundtable. It's your discussion, but we can supply a little bit of information as to what kind of feedback we've got and so forth. So that's, that's the intent. Another piece of the puzzle tomorrow.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Question about the future agendas. So we have a placeholder for an October 18th work session, but we don't have.
That was, that was next on my list. I'm, I'm going to suggest that we cancel the October 18th work, you know, hold unless it's somebody for some reason would like to have another meeting. We would like to stick with the meeting on the 25th because we have publicized that, people to listen in. But it gets, it gets you out of three meetings. That was a placeholder primarily if we were dealing with some headquarters evaluations, we held that. So I recommend, Mr. President, that we cancel the October 18th work session. And if you'll notice, the calendar now starts to, to bleed in quite significantly into 2023. And we'll start to discuss some of the goals over the next few months relative to what we're going to do in 2023. So great suggestion.
So I'm going to jump in real quick on correspondence. I read the dam safety report. Should we be concerned about all the sinkholes in Smith and Carmen and, and the drilling that we're doing on Walterville about the economics? In a nutshell, it looked like, you know, you look at, you know, Carmen diversion, sinkholes, all of the, Walterville Canal, the drilling that you guys were doing in January, and we may have to lower the level. I mean, I'm reading some things here that, given the magnitude of what Walt Lieberg is, we have sinkholes in two of our reservoirs, and we've got Walterville, we're drilling testing them now. Zero. Once, I mean.
Lisa, would you, I'll call on Lisa. She's out there somewhere.
Hi, Adam.
Should, how concerned should this board be if, I mean, Lieberg is huge, but if we're, we're just spending a couple hundred million or 150 million on Carmen, and we've got sinkholes in two of the three reservoirs? Is that something that this board should be concerned about?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very fair question. The sinkholes in Carmen diversion reservoir have been there for a number of years. We think those are relatively easy to remediate. The sinkholes in Trail Bridge reservoir were still ongoing in doing our investigation. It will be probably another year before we have the root cause of those sinkholes and then can move on to remediation efforts. There is some, certainly some risk of the Trail Bridge sinkholes, particularly as it relates to the schedule of our Carmen licensed deployment projects, in particular Fish Passage. That said, we don't have enough information at this time to, to say what the fix will be for those sinkholes. So I wouldn't want to speculate, but we'll be getting information to you as quickly as we can. With respect to Walterville, we have had a couple of things there that we're looking at. But I want to, I'm not sure we were entirely clear in our memo about this. Walterville's a different situation than Lieberg. Walterville is not classified as high hazard along the entire project length. And the issues that we're concerned about right now are in the forebait. And so they are, we presume with, with good backing from experts, that those will be much easier to fix if they do become a problem than the, what we're experiencing with Lieberg at this time. So again, there's uncertainty associated with all of those things, and our dam safety team is actively working on trying to figure out what the issues are and how we solve them. But I don't think we're looking at another Lieberg situation with Walterville if that's one of your big concerns in terms of seismic and canal safety issues.
No, thank you, Lisa. I was just reading this, that although unlikely, it cannot be, situation cannot be resolved if we start lowering the canal to reduce sea breach or entirely ceasing generation. And that, that's what concerned me about Walterville in that, in that statement. Although you did say it's unlikely, but it's still a possibility. I'm just, the dark cloud, I'm sorry. But I'm reading all these different things, and we're spending all this money on, on Carmen. I just hate to spend another 150 million bucks and have somebody say the sinkholes are a challenge or whatever. But we'll just have to wait and see. So anything else on correspondence? Sonya?
I am curious, kind of off the, the Walterville side. You know, last month, we talked about how the license was for both Lieberg and Walterville. Has there been any more thoughts on if we make one decision on one, it's how it impacts the other? And in terms of if we did relisten, can we relisten? Is it going to break some key covenants that we have on the Walterville side? Is there any problem?
Probably, Commissioner Carlson, probably a better discussion to dive into when we're talking about this on the, on the 25th.
Okay.
Staff will be able to.
I'd like to talk more about that. And if there's any other things that, any other entities that have skin in the game on this and maybe can help or, you know, could, I don't know, but it would be nice to know if there's any other help that's there for some of this major impact. Okay, those are the two.
Okay. Right, next is agendas.
I talked about the one scheduling issue to cancel October 18th work session. And now just, we're preparing to get into 2023 already, so.
Hey, Matt, you have a question on the agenda?
Well, if you're cutting one of our meetings, is that going to cut our wages too? Yeah. A couple of questions on agendas. Just before, or our last meeting was just before the fire blew up in Oak Ridge. And we did a public service, a public safety power shut-off, right? In, in order to reduce the risk up there, which by all appearances seemed to have worked. Nothing happened. I mean, except that the power went out for a bunch of people. I would be interested in some feedback about the lessons learned. I suspect that those public safety power shut-offs, PSPS, will become something that we're dealing with more in the future. I'm curious if there are any policy issues that we need to wrestle there. And I'm also curious just kind of logistically, what, what you all are learning from having done that. So just an information memo to, you know, do us, your feedback would be great. And I know we, it looks like we have an issue in December around incentivizing underground generators, and maybe that's related? Is that earlier, that the December item on potential program to incentivize underground generators for customers in high-risk areas? I assume that's high wildfire last year. Am I looking at?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That may be on a copy over.
I will make a look. Again.
I believe that it came from the wildfire mitigation work session, and we were talking about some essential programs for customers similar to generators and whatnot. I think the notion came up that perhaps there would be something there, and Shanayn Parisi was going to get back to the board with some ideas for consideration.
Yeah, so related, so maybe there's an option to combine those. And then my other question is about hydrogen. I know we're doing a pilot project with North East Natural and Hydrogen, and I'm just curious to hear about that. I'd love to have, if we could carve out 20 minutes just for a short presentation and some questions around that. That would be useful to me. I don't know if the rest of the board is interested in that. I know we have a January, January item where we were looking at the climate guidebook, and that might be an appropriate place to plant that next to, and far enough out that there's time to prepare for it. Are the board members interested in?
Two, three.
Yeah, we got three, three heading on, so we're good.
Okay. Anything else? Sonya?
One comment. So it does seem like we tend to be ahead, which I don't mind, obviously, in the agenda. But the public hearing for the next two meetings, we're raising, we're looking at raising rates, which we are. I don't know if we'll be ahead, but is there any way to maybe indicate on the agenda itself that, you know, these times may vary? And that, you know, maybe it'd be good for you to be here early in case we're ahead on the agenda? Because, you know, we would have just done the, we wouldn't even be at the place now where we're doing the public hearing.
I mean, we could, go ahead.
I can add to that, because I was going to make a comment at wrap-up about when we do public comment. And we, we're so fast at the beginning of our meeting that we actually get to public comment before it's public comment time. So like tonight, we had somebody who was late, but she actually came before 5:00, before the public comment was supposed to start. So maybe if we do have some kind of disclaimer on our, our agenda, that would just be helpful. I don't know that anybody's late, but I have thought about this before, that we're often ahead, which is great for us.
Actually, you know, we try to keep track of that. I mean, she came in, handed on, on, and left. And she, I mean, I think Will told her that she could, if she wanted to, she could. I mean, that's been a challenge for, as long as I've been here. You, you can't, you can sit there and do that. It's going to happen no matter what.
If we just have something on there that just says. Yeah, time's subject to, to change. So if you want to have public comments, you might want to show up at the beginning of the meeting. Just, just something like that. Because if somebody doesn't know, and it's their first time coming, and they're late, it might not ever come again.
We still accommodate.
I mean, well, you know, at the, at the county, they have agenda items that are time-certain. And it's, so it's like, okay, we know we're going to be in the meeting at 6:30. So you say, the time-certain thing is time-certain at 6:30. And if we're in the middle of an agenda item, you postpone it, you do time-certain? I mean, that might be something, I don't know. I know that that's one of the things county does. Usually, it's at the beginning of a meeting.
Exactly, or the city puts it all the way at the very beginning of the meeting, and that way, there's not any movement. I don't know if that's something we can comment on.
Yours is always at the very beginning of the meeting.
Well, but public hearings, not necessarily like tonight.
Public, public hearing on the rates, you know, like, that's, it's always, it's never been exactly timed. And what you do is you just wait until 7:00, and you wait, and you say, is anybody here? If there's nobody here, you just, it's a moot point. But I, yeah, I, I think that we can put on our agendas that, you know, it's, it's, you will be honored at that time. And, but if you want to get there early, that's okay too. Because it's always running early, it's never running late.
President Brown, I know that when we post, post the agendas, we do say, you know, there is a disclaimer that time can be changed and, and other things. I think what seems like we're trying to do is to provide some, some degree of certainty or accommodation, one of those two. And we can, you know, all, all work with. And in hauling to see if there's ways that we can raise that a little bit differently, just to make sure that people are aware that, that there's.
Well, and it's also, it's, I think, people run in the meeting, you gotta kind of keep, get used to who's here. And you see somebody come in, you know, an unfamiliar face, you don't think it's staff or anything. Just take the executive privilege and say, are you here to testify or whatever? And do it, because I'd rather break protocol and do that than have somebody come here that wanted to be heard and is not heard. So those are really good points you made, and we'll make the adjustment. Thank you. John?
I guess, I just have a, a question about correspondence and, you know, how does an agenda item make it into an actual agenda item as opposed to a correspondence that we get? Because, you know, I go through and I read all these things, and then I'm, I'm coming to the meeting. And there've been several times where I've read into the, the correspondence and thought, oh, okay, I, you know, I've got the questions on this and that. And then it's like, oh, that's just, that was just stuff for you to read and then ask questions out of. I'm just curious as to how, how that determination is made, whether or not it makes it to an agenda item or just something, read it if you've got a question. Because some of these things are, like, you know, Commissioner Brown brought up some things in one of the correspondence, but to me, some of them are a little bit deeper than just, let me pick something out with five minutes to go. I'm just curious as to how that determination is made.
Well, I, I'd start by, by stating that, I guess, we've always felt like correspondence is an opportunity to discuss as well. So it's, it's not necessarily something where we would have planned a presentation and gone through a particular policy item or action or, or guidance for. But it is provided with the intent that commissioners can provide feedback or, or discuss it. I think it's almost historical folklore that we've gotten to the end of the meeting, and, oh, it's a correspondence item, and we sort of just move through it quickly. That is something that, that I think we can change if we want to. And tonight was a good example. These, these are provided for information, but also for feedback. And I, I've always felt like that's, that's maybe a missed opportunity that we just sort of skip through them. But usually, they're pretty meaty, and there's things that we would enjoy questions or feedback on. Usually, when it makes it to an agenda item, it is either feeding some sort of direct policy guidance or some action. That's, that's typically what the difference is. Now, sometimes there's informational items. We do have informational items where the board wants to just openly discuss something, and that's, that's available too. So it's not an exact science, Commissioner. But we felt correspondence is more informational with the opportunity, whereas an agenda item is really a little more specifically geared toward guidance or, or action.
And again, I'm just trying to get my feet on the, and the same thing goes to consent calendar, right? You know, there were things in the consent calendar, it's like, do I want to pull that to ask this specific question? Or, you know, or do I do that offline type of thing? So I'm just trying to get my feet, because I'm one of the ones that digs in and does the wonky stuff. But I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, bring all the, all of you along, you know, for another hour in a meeting on wonky stuff. So I'm just trying to get my bearings as to what is appropriate and what is, is the way things go.
I think you want, you know, maybe a suggestion is that when you get your board packet, we got them like Friday, and we had until Thursday. You go through it, and if you see something like, if I really had to dig into the dam safety thing, which may happen in the future, is I just sent an email to everybody saying, hey, this thing's got some meat to it, and I want to add some questions and, and let your general manager know, ask your questions there, and if it doesn't, it's not satisfied. Alls I got to do is get three head nods, or whoever's sitting in the seat, get three head nods, and it's an agenda item. It's in a gen item. And so we can move it up that way. It's just, it's a matter of communicating and understanding, and, and don't be shy. I mean, because if you, if you're going to extend our meeting an hour, I will have to gavel up 55 minutes to spot, about an hour. But seriously, you know, I'd rather spend the time and get it right. And we, you've got questions, they're valid questions, we all have questions. So go ahead. Just ask it, ask it, and if you want it on the agenda, get three people to shake their head, and we'll get it there. Thank you.
I like using the pre-meeting questions for things to dig in. Is there any need to research?
I agree that the pre-meeting questions also perform. There's a record of, of those questions, and those are always good sometimes to capture a little bit more formally. But I would also say, you know, as, as staff, sometimes we struggle also with how much information do we provide? From a detailed perspective, more detail, less detail? I mean, there's, that's, that's a constant thing that we evaluate. And so sometimes if we go through what you just described, where, oh, we have this correspondence. You know, there was an example in this one where I cut back a lot of the detail on one of those correspondence items, because I, I felt like it needed to be at a level where the board could focus on it. You know, you're not going to read 12 pages of something. You might read, you know, one page of something that's very succinct for you. But that may not, you know, if there's more questions that are starting to come up, then we might start to go, we might start pulling more detail back into it. So it's, it's a constant process for staff as well.
And one of my, one of my challenges is just the, is my work, my work schedule, right? So if I get, if I get a board packet on Thursday or Friday, and the meeting's on Tuesday. Excuse me, but my busiest days are Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, right? That's, that's when my work week is. And so to be able to, to get that sometimes is challenging for me. And I, I'm not saying we need to change procedures for it, but that may be why I can't get to it. I'm reading the packet, you know, but, but. that may be why I can't get to it. I'm reading the packet, you know, but typing out hard questions, you know, when you're feeding 250 people is, is, is challenging at some point. Thank you.
I got a solution. We'll just go have dinner at your place. Mondays, every Monday. All right. Other questions or comments? The general manager, correspondence?
I think Lisa had typed a comment about doing an annual dam safety review.
What's that?
I just want to make sure that we see. Lisa said something about the annual dam safety review in the comments.
Mr. Reed, Lisa says, we plan to do a dam safety agenda item annually. Our chief dam safety engineer is out of town, which is why we get a correspondence this year.
Thank you.
I think that's part of our requirement in the dam safety program. I think I know it is. Sorry.
Anything else for the good of the order? If not, thank you. Email. Financial report? Send it as an attack.